Good evening and welcome to the March.
March Madness.
Board Selectmen's Meeting for 2020. First item on the agenda, since we actually have an audience tonight and participants. My right, your left, in the event of an emergency is the stairway that you all probably came down to enter this room. If for some reason that was not passable, you go straight down the hallway out the back, which will bring you to the parking lot by the firehouse, or up the stairs behind the wall with the clock on it, and that will put you through the double doors and double doors and out in front of the town hall. With that, can we please rise for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, now we are.
Start again.
Nope, not happening. I'll start with introductions on my left tonight, please.
Good evening, John Corangelo.
Good evening, Mitch Goldblatt.
Good evening, Ralph Okenquist.
Ann Denny.
Good evening, Judy Williams.
Good evening, Margaret Nowicki.
You're on now.
I'm on. Okay, so I didn't say when I was on.
Hit the button. There you go. Now you're off. Okay.
So good evening before.
Yes. Okay, thank you. I, with the current excitement that's out in Connecticut and the entire United States and worldwide with the coronavirus, I had asked our town health director, Dr. Amir Mohammed, if he could be first item on the agenda tonight. Actually, not even an agenda item. It is a public emergency necessary discussion, and he's brought several with him. And Ms. Luddy is with him from the Board of Health, Tino Russo from Emergency Management, and Brian Slagowski, our health director, and several others. Well, sir, yeah, that's all part of, it falls under the Tino umbrella. But thank you for that. Doctor, I asked you to come to do it. There is some press in the room, so there may be questions, whether from press or from individuals afterwards. And if either any of you others that accompanied him want to be up here at the podium with him, you are welcome to also. To the podium, you say who you are and what your job is.
Good evening. Okay. Well, thank you for the invitation. I'm Dr. Amir Mohammed, a practicing physician and occupational and environmental medicine specialist. So in my role as a health director for the town of Orange, I felt like it's important and I appreciate the invitation to come here and kind of update our selectmen and also kind of.
Our residents.
Residents. And I will be writing a little column and updating our community also and updating our website because, as Jim said, there's a lot of excitement going on. And I think we are the town with mixed demographics, with different age group, and it's important that we keep ourselves up to date. So just briefly, a couple of months ago, I wrote a column in the, you know, the Milford Orange Times, kind of expressing my view on it because we knew that this was going to be coming as an epidemic and will become pandemic. Because virus, they don't see any boundaries. So we knew that China had censorship with the data, so, you know, US were prepared and WHO finally called this a pandemic today. Cutting to more recent events, you know, neighboring states had already called the state of emergency, for example, New York and Rhode Island initially because they had some positive confirmed cases of coronavirus COVID. Yesterday, Governor Lamont came and declared the state of emergency and preparedness. So what does that do? So I have a letter specifically from the governor. He's, and again, at this time, we know there are a few cases that are confirmed and number of tests being done. So that doesn't mean, well, I should say this, the numbers don't matter as much now that we're already in a state of emergency, which means that we should be all with different towns and cities, working hands in hands together with the, you know, CDC guideline and Department of Public Health input. We are having daily calls and conferences among various stakeholders, which I'll go briefly over that. So what does that mean? That means that, you know, community transmission is occurring. You don't need to be a case that has traveled to China, Iran, or South Korea because, one way or the other, we have, you know, those members either from New York or other locally in the US that have come in contact with some folks. So, right. So, you know, with all the frenzy and attention, at least, we all, now Americans are washing their hands more frequently, so that's a good sign. So this is something positive that came out, right? You know, so Governor said that he hereby declare a public health emergency and civil preparedness throughout the state. He has directing the Commissioner of Public Health to delegate the powers regarding isolation or quarantine to municipal and district directors of the public health. So this is a lot of, you know, sort of important responsibility that I and my coworkers have in this department. But we have already started working on it. Tino, who represent Emergency Management, we met last Friday with key stakeholders like Police Department, Board of Education, AMR, to kind of plan out. And we want to continue our weekly meetings and assess the local situation. So this morning, I also met with Board of Education, Dr. Scarpetti, who's a superintendent of the school, kind of provided them the input because there have been some concerns. Obviously, you may have heard recently, the school in Westport, right, the Staples School, High School, has been shut down. Some of the other businesses, for example, Senior Center in Vest Haven has been shut down, UNH has been closed, and they're offering other. So where we at? I mean, can it happen? Yes, it can happen. So if we are well-prepared and we have enough steps to kind of follow, then we will not cause any panic or any type of unprepared or unnecessary drastic effect. So, and again, I am closely monitoring the situation. We have a PUI person under investigation. CDC has put forth specific guidelines and how to do that. So we are doing daily check on that specific person. It may, it may, the number may increase that we have to, but we're limited with the staff. Brian is our chief sanitarian, and myself is only limited with the assigned responsibility. But I'm fully involved in it, and I would do as much surveillance possible or make myself available as much as possible to any of you or any of our key stakeholders. I'm in constant conversation with the Police Department, with our nurses, school nurses, and our Board of Education because I believe that it has to be unified decision to keep everybody informed. We put forth a letter indicating our businesses that what, you know, what aspects, what type of basic steps they can take to prevent, you know, spread in the community. So we all have to be diligent. We all have to work together. And this is not going to go away anytime soon, unfortunately. There is no treatment at this time. There's no vaccine at this time. And the other part of the situation is that we're also in a second phase of the flu. So our vulnerable population, elderly and children, are at risk for those who are immunocompromised. You know, they are also at risk. And as I said, our demographic in this town is very mixed. So we do have these folks in our town, and it's important that we provide all the necessary information to them. So, you know, as we know that any time, Dr. Carter, who is our state epidemiologist, is a very experienced person who's been working with the DPH for almost 30 years, very well-respected infectious disease and epidemiologist, and he said today, on today's call at 1:00, I was here taking the call, and said that it was just a matter of time when local towns and cities will be affected and they may have to shut their school and things of that nature. So I think we're not there yet, but we should be prepared in terms of some contingency plans and what can be done. So any question at this time, I'm happy to take any question or address any concern that you may have.
Anybody at the table yet? If not, is there anybody in the audience that has any question?
Please, yes.
Hi, Pam McLaughlin from the New Haven Register. Could you go over that part again about closely monitoring someone and what PUI is?
Okay, repeat the question and then.
So the question is, what are the steps that we take when we closely monitor the person under investigation? So we call it PUI, Person Under Investigation. So the state has, basically, the CDC has adopted this model of making sure that we are keeping these folks who have had a recent travel to China or some of the other countries that were declared with the epidemic. And if any person has come or has any history of travel and we get informed from the state that this person lives in your jurisdiction or town or resident, we make a phone call, we have them, you know, give us the information on a daily basis, how they're doing, and they should be self-isolating themselves for 14 days before they go out in the community. So that's, in a nutshell.
And we do.
Is there one person in Orange you said that's?
There is one at this time.
At this time, yes. Who is almost completing, so there's not a, you know, active infection going on at this time. Yes. Yes.
Brandon.
Yeah. So what would it take for you to decide that something like the schools or another facility needed to be shut down?
Thank you for this question. So the question is, what steps would we take as a health department to shut down any operations or schools or any other, you know, business? So this is a very good question and very important one, and I take it very seriously. It's not an easy step. I think the most important thing is that I have already communicated my concern with the, you know, Board of Education and all the principals and superintendent. What the state has been guiding us, that it will take one case, one confirmed case, to close the business or the school for that matter. Because the risk of transmission in community, you know, person to person is so high that you don't want to jeopardize the health of the staff members or the other children because they will bring the, you know, infection home and that it may cause more harm and damage unnecessarily. So my stance is sort of a more conservative approach. My recommendations to the Board of Educations was that they can postpone or delay any type of unnecessary, you know, travel or trips or any other, you know, non-essential activities in a later day or time at this time. So that's what my, yeah. Go ahead, Steve.
Dr. Mohammed, when are we going to get a test kit? So are you, the real question is, are you able to determine that someone has this flu without a test kit?
So the question is, when are we, you mean the state is going to get this test kit?
Or you?
So we're a very small department. I don't know if you know, just Brian and myself. So we don't have any lab in our, you know, we obviously collaborate with the partners. I have the authority to order the test because I'm a practicing clinician, right? So if I suspect somebody who doesn't have any primary care doctor or any provider, I can take this, you know, into my responsibility and order a test, for example. Now, the question is, the state has the capacity to test. It was CDC, but a week ago or so, we were informed by the Commissioner that they have the test kit and they can run almost 60 cases per day, almost 50 to 60 cases per day. The recommendations are, you don't want to test any asymptomatic person. So meaning if somebody does not have any symptom, say, for example, had been in contact with, not in close proximity contact with a positive case, but they don't exhibit any symptoms, it's not necessary to test them unless they are symptomatic. Now, this may change as we go forward. However, I must add, this southwestern part of Connecticut, right, if somebody's having upper respiratory tract infection, the likelihood that they may be co-infected with coronavirus is very high, and in that demographic or population, they are testing for COVID. So it may change. It's a fluid situation. And as I started saying, you know, virus do not see any boundaries. I am in close contact with Cunipiac Valley Health District and Vest Haven and other, you know, Milfords or neighboring towns, what they're doing, what their recommendations are. So we don't find ourselves, you know, saying something differently that what, because, as I said, because of the traffic, because of the, you know, footprints and people, that's normal day-to-day business, we don't want to disrupt it. So I'm closely following the state lead, what they're recommending, and also looking at the data, the evidence that's out there, right? So it's not my decision, but it has to be a mutual decision to take necessary steps.
Thank you.
Yes, Tino.
Yeah, Tino Russo, Emergency Manager. Do you want to comment on the fact that they're increasing the testing capability by now authorizing private laboratories like Quest to do the testing?
Yes. So the question is, does the private lab have started testing for coronavirus? So the short answer is yes, but the long answer is that I've heard different news that they may not be ready in Connecticut, and they're just doing some other states that have already, you know, like California, State of Washington. So we still have to see when they will be up and running. Again, state is doing the, you know, they are fully equipped and they can test, so we would have to wait. I haven't had full, yeah, full information whether they are, they should have the capability because, again, CDC has time and FDA have been approved for their lab to be testing for the coronavirus. So at this time, again, it's, our state will find out when they will be up and running. But they should have the capability sooner than later. Yes, ma'am?
May I ask you a question? First thing, could you please go over again, you did say handwashing, all the townspeople to really do that as a precaution? Are there other steps that people can do as they're going into the grocery stores, as they're, you know, picking up their children from school? That's one part. And then the other part is, could you go over again, what would be the first symptoms that people might exhibit, you know, coming down with the virus?
Right. So the question is, what should we do as a community or as an individual person when we go out in public grocery stores and others? And what would be the, the second question is, what are the initial symptoms? So very, very important question. So what you can do in public, obviously, you don't want to wear a mask because it doesn't do anything. Only if you're symptomatic and coughing, you will put up the mask, if you have one, to prevent the spread, right? So what you do is basically, you just do the routine, you know, again, Purell and other type of hand sanitizer are good. I mean, I went to Costco the other day, they're offering the wipes to clean the petroleum, what have you. So that's something you can do. You don't have much control. Put it this way, I mean, if you're going to get exposed, you're going to get exposed, unfortunately. What you can do is basically, you know, when you're doing day-to-day business, washing hands more closely, that's what I teach my kids, and I try to follow the same because I'm, you know, in a hospital setting with the patients, they could have flu, simple cold, or coronavirus. You can differentiate. The symptoms are the same. You asked me the symptoms. The initial symptoms are cough, you know, sore throat, URI, upper respiratory tract infection. However, in coronavirus, we have seen, and this is the data that came from basically assessing patients who were in China who were diagnosed and had some reactions. So they are more symptomatic with breathing. They have more dyspnea on exertion, meaning difficulty breathing when they exert. So that's kind of characteristically more severe and different than simple flu. Again, and, but as I said, it depends on individual's medical health condition, how good it is. You know, if they are immunocompromised, they would be more symptomatic, meaning they would exhibit symptoms more rapidly than someone who's otherwise healthy. So just precautionary measures, you know, keep an eye on it. If you're sick, stay at home because my advice to all the community members, it could be cold. Again, don't have to, but if the symptoms are not getting better, you should contact the, you know, your primary care provider or someone who can guide you what to do.
Pam.
On the school issue, if you wait until a teacher or a child is symptomatic to close the schools, is it correct to assume that they probably spread it around already before they were symptomatic? So why would?
Why would wait?
Why would you wait?
So the question is, when is the appropriate time to close the school? Why should we wait for one positive case to emerge and then close the system? And I think it's a very good question. I don't have the exact answer, but based on what we have learned, is basically, you know, if a person, if a child is sick, right, they should, the parents should be advised to not to send their kid regardless if it's coronavirus or upper respiratory tract. My kids had URI infection, you know, because it's a season of flu, everybody gets sick. I was the last one to be affected, you know. They cannot blame me because I didn't bring them from the hospital. So, and then, you know, before me, it's my wife who trans. So anyhow, so we know the transmission. So the question is, like, we cannot determine based on just the presenting symptoms if the child is sick with coronavirus or any other upper respiratory tract infection. However, I think my recommendations to the school superintendent and the teachers were, you know, you just keep reminding parents that they should not be sending their sick child to school unless they are afebrile, without any fever or symptoms, for at least 24 hours without any medication. So they should do due diligence. Now, if you have, if the child go to their pediatrician or, you know, their provider and they get tested for coronavirus and that becomes positive, then we have an issue. You know, they, initially, they may not be spreading germs, but if they don't, if they stay in the school and keep spreading, that gives a sort of a community outbreak, right? So unfortunately, it would be, in my opinion, it would be premature to kind of close the school without knowing. But it would take only one case to shut the school, to prevent further transmission because by the time they are diagnosed, it's kind of, you know, early stages, but we should be prepared if we, if you're going to, you know, close the school. The good thing is that spring break is coming. So, you know, what the Staples Schools are doing, or I spoke to one of the teacher, they have already, you know, shut the school and they will resume maybe after the spring break. A lot of universities and community colleges are doing the same thing. So hopefully, by that time, we would see a downward trend, but it's still all fluid. So that's the reason why I'm not recommending to close, you know, again, I'm a parent myself too, and I want to emphasize this thing, I were, you know, thinking from both aspects. So hopefully, you know, I pray every day, five times a day, and pray that we don't get any positive case, but if it does happen, then we have to take these steps. I hope you would all agree with that.
Sure. Thank you.
Steve. One more question for you, doctor. Anything you can say to allay the fears of people who are not going into our local Chinese restaurants? They're really suffering.
Yeah.
Maybe the health department inspects them and they pay and...
Right. I think it's unnecessary fear. I mean, if they, you know, I think if restaurants get checked with our team on a regular basis, it's not, I think it's just misinformation. It's not specifically just Chinese restaurant. It could be any restaurant, right? Why target only one specific demographic? I don't agree with that sort of, you know, type of behavior, but people should realize if, my recommendation would be, yes, if they are sick, they don't go to any type of restaurant, you know, whether it's Chinese or non-Chinese or what have you, right? But if they need to go eat or whatever, you know, they should not be going somewhere which is jam-packed. They have 50-plus, I don't think there's any restaurant here where you would find, unless it's a big sale going on or some discount, you know. So, yeah, few people in any restaurant. I think that's sort of a normalcy and nature of the life or day-to-day activity. Yeah, but they shouldn't be targeting only specifically because all the, I want to rest assured our community that our health department does a fantastic job in inspecting them, making sure they follow all the guidelines. And that's the reason why they're in business. If there's any discrepancy, any deficiency, we are the one who closed them down. So don't just abandon any type of restaurant from any certain, you know, ethnicity.
Tino.
Yes, Tino.
Dr. Amir, just if you could comment on sort of the issue of how serious is this when you catch it, based on age groups? I understand it varies immensely from age group to age group. So if you catch it, or if you, I understand if you have some kind of underlying health conditions, but what about just age? What are we finding?
So good question, Tino. The question is, what are sort of the disease impact on any age group, right? So that my answer is based on what I've been reading from some of the studies that have been published on Chinese patients who were diagnosed and admitted in the hospital, right? All the data is, again, coming from that part because they had seen those cases earlier. So, you know, 80%, again, this is what the CDC is saying, 80% healthy adults should recover from this infection. So 20% can go hay-wired or can go out of control. And out of that 20%, if somebody has underlying disease or illness, right, immunocompromised, severe diabetes, uncontrolled diabetes, I don't want to just say diabetes because there are many varieties. So if any chronic disease is uncontrolled, then, you know, 2% may die. So the fatality or mortality rate is between 2% to 3%, and that may change because that's data that we have studied on Chinese population. Thankfully, I am very confident we have a better healthcare system. We have well-equipped hospitals. We have very talented, you know, healthcare providers, and thankfully, I'm one of them. But besides that, no, I'm very confident. So my understanding, my recommendation to all of you and my family and friends were, look, you want to avoid any international travel during the spring break. I canceled mine because you don't want to get sick when you're outside. I cannot trust any system outside the US. By far, we are in the best, you know, system here. It's expensive, yes. We have a lot of uncovered, uninsured people. We know the challenge, but by far, this is one of the best systems that I'm confident. So I don't want to take any risk. I don't want to cancel all my travel to Europe or anywhere and stay here until this epidemic is over.
Write it out. Just write it out.
Yeah, just stay put and don't travel internationally because we have epidemic going on, yeah.
Garlic and sauce.
Yes, please.
First of all, I want to thank you, Dr. Mohammed, for coming and briefing us. I think it was a great initiative. When I worked at the UN, we worked on, we had to work on two potential pandemics, which were Ebola and H1N1.
H1N1, yeah.
And I think, you know, of the many lessons that we learned out of those experiences, probably the biggest ones were the need for advanced preparedness, to be proactive and not reactive, not wait until we get cases sort of multiplying. And I'm glad that you have that approach. And also for the need for really clear and consolidated communication to our citizenry so they understand. We have many questions here. So that says to me that we don't all understand the disease and we don't understand the risk. So we have to find ways to communicate that better. I'm glad that there is a committee. I'm not sure whether the Board of Selectmen is represented on your committee, but if it isn't, I think we should be. And any additional ways that we could help your committee and strengthen it, I would love to hear.
Well, thank you. So a few recommendations. I mean, I'm very much concerned, I mean, my, today, all morning and evening were spent on talking with Board of Education because, again, children's are vulnerable population. The other vulnerable population in our town is elderly, right? So we have a senior center, and I had been in conversation with the Director, Joan Cartella, and asking her, you know, sort of activities, and my recommendations were, we should cancel any unessential, non-essential sort of activity to, because they are the vulnerable population that can get infected very quickly and may have very much adverse effects. So not trying to pinpoint or, you know, isolate this particular demographics in our folks, but we need to be sensitive to their needs and their issues. So what can help is basically, this is my first time, I mean, I was in training when H1N1 occurred and, because I'm in environmental medicine, and that was a time when we learned how important it is to have certain population of your emergency responder to be fit-tested for N95 and pepper, you know, positive airway, sort of a scuba. So those were something that came out. And I think what we're learning in emergency management, and you're more than welcome, any one of you to join us. We meet Friday morning, 8:00 in Police Department, and we have all the great professional folks on the table discussing and asking all the relevant intelligent questions. So any of you can, you know, most likely, but I think it gives us, I've been working in this position with, you know, with Jim's reappointment for last three and a half years, and I love every moment of it because I can help the community. But I think, at the same time, I would request that we should look at our funding and some of the aspects of care that we can provide to the community. There are a lot of questions that I get from our media, from newspaper, what are we offering? What, we just don't have a bandwidth. But I would love to kind of expand our services and help our community even more proactively. That's sort of my request, since you asked me what I can. So I have a big wish list, but I don't have a time to. I think you get bored with my big list, I, you know. But these are the essential elements of our services that we, I think, education and health should be the priority in any city and town. And I'm sure you all are fully aware of the responsibility because we don't, thankfully, we didn't get surprised with what was happening because Tino took the initiative and got all of us together and started talking about these efforts, which I'm happy, and spoke to the Chief Gagny this morning as well, you know, talking about how AMR is responding. is responding. So all the key players are actively engaged, and I've shared my cellphone with everybody, you know, so teachers are calling me, nurses are texting me to, and I'm providing all my full support. So we don't want to ignore this, but we take this as an opportunity and look at our budgeting and sort of resources. May, perhaps we can expand and, you know, and lead from the front. Obviously, we need Board of Health. Carol is here. We need a robust Board of Health to kind of actively participate as well, and we, we need their blessings. So thank you for this question, yeah.
All right. Anybody at the, hold on, anybody at the table? All right. Because Dr. Mira, just so you know, he has me on a time constraint here, so I'm, so I am watching the clock. Tino?
Yeah. Can I just comment a little bit about our committee and how it came about?
Would you like to come up here and do that part?
Please.
Get Dr. Mira, manager.
No, that's right. We're just watching the, his time.
Yeah. Good evening. Tino Russo, Emergency Management. This is not our first emergency. We went through a bunch of weather-related, a lot of them, over the years. We have an emergency management organization, been around a long time. It's Fred Palmer, myself, others. But we have something called the Emergency Management Advisory Council. That's been around for 10-plus years.
More than that.
That is a standing committee-
You did that.
-that's organized to handle emergencies from the town level. That committee already meets once a month with, we have members, semi-permanent members, police, fire, just about everyone, outside membership, United Illuminating, the people who provide our electricity, whatever. So we already have that group in place. So this was easy for us to quickly develop a subcommittee under what we call the SF8, Emergency Support Function 8, which is medical, is department. And we organized it, and now it's the SF8 EMAC COVID-19 Subcommittee. So I'm saying, we were already organized, and we just broke into a subcommittee with all of the stakeholders, and we have a standing meeting every Friday morning-
Yep.
-at the EOC. We do have an EOC. It's Police Department.
Police Department.
Yeah. And we're there. We're going to hold a meeting every week as needed. We need to, boy, we need to. And in between, we're communicating, sort of clearinghouse of communication between all of us. So just to give you a little background that we were already organized for an emergency.
And that's very good, Tino, because I did receive a question, I think it was from the New Haven Register, asking exactly what we were doing. Wasn't that from you? I think.
I'm not sure. I've been asked-
I think, this, I think so. And so this was very good because it gives a little more breakdown for people at home and short press here that didn't know that that was, exists. I mean, actually, right at the table. Margaret has background in this and, but didn't know that this group exists, so.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, Tino.
Right. We have been working, you know, in the background. We didn't wait until something happened or we have a positive case. So we, we got all the appropriate key players on the table and to go over the process, you know, steps. Obviously, they may need fine-tuning. That's why we're meeting every Friday, every week to kind of assess the situation. It's a very fluid situation. We may have more, you know, now Westport, right? Initially, it was Westchester County or New Rochelle. Now it's Westport, so we're getting closer and closer. So that's why it's important that we assess on a weekly basis. And, but we are in close communication even on a daily basis, right? So we talk and we share emails and phone calls and text messages almost every day several times.
Okay. Brandon?
Just quickly, what's the best way for residents, for the public, to keep track of what's going on with you and with the department?
Right. So they can, you know, check on our website. We have posted some important links, and we will be updating it on a regular basis. But CDC guidelines and the State Department of Public Health are also providing some important information that all of us, you know, we all have the access to internet and some of the latest information because it keeps on changing on an hourly basis. Our website may not have that much of, you know, quick updates, but CDC websites and state are, they have, they staff like 24/7. They have, you know, came up with this COVID email address too, where you can, like us, the local health department can email that, and it will be answered or triaged very quickly. It was only Dr. Carter who was fielding all the questions. I could only imagine when, when he would get the time to sleep. But, you know, we have, we have some folks who are working 24/7 at the state level, yeah.
And you will hear, like, the school is having a delayed opening-
On Monday.
On Monday. And they are meeting with staff and doing some prep work and this sort of thing. It's not because that there is an issue within the school system. Part of, with Dr. Mira, Dr. Mohammed coming here, we, I had asked him to come and make a presentation, and next thing, there was a rumor floating out there, which Tino brought to me, that we were having a ma, yes, which came from Mrs. Luddy, which came from her daughter, which came from her grandchildren.
Really?
That, that this meeting tonight was about us discussing closing the schools. That is not our purview. Ours, my thought was to have the doctor come to make a light presentation, try to inform everybody. If it, when it comes to closing the schools, it would be up to the doctor and the Board of Education, the superintendent, not the first selectman or Board of Selectmen. So I did try to get it out there as quickly as I could so that, you know, people would see that. And I guess it worked because everybody in this room I recognize for many other reasons. So, so that was it. Are there any other questions for the doctor? Everybody satisfied with what we've?
Well, there, there may be more rumors and all that, but, you know, try to understand that this is, this is an ongoing issue, right? So the best we can be educated about what's happening and the, the quicker we can detect. So if you find somebody who had had, you know, keep your eyes and ears open, I would say, if you know someone who had had recent travel. I mean, there's nothing to be ashamed of. Nobody knew about this, right? That the, the entire cruise ship would have these cases. God forbid, you know, that's why I don't like to go on a cruise. You know, now I've convinced my wife, never asked me. So I think, you know, just be aware. I, I think the most important thing is how much information, you know, from the reliable resources, not just any, you know, website, just reliable resources like CDC and the state because they, they are the one who are putting up, you know, up-to-date information based on data. So, you know, be, be well-read and well-informed, and don't pay too much attention on the rumors. But if you have anyone who are concerned, reach out to us. We will be more than happy to kind of address. And I'm always available to, I mean, I've personally contacted some of the folks who have had questions about whether it's a true exposure or just sort of, you know, a little bit more concerning to kind of, you know, based on, on medical questions to differentiate or triage. We'll be working closely with our social services. I hope, you know, we come up with a plan to postpone all the, all the unnecessary gathering. We are, we don't want to, you know, wait until things happen. And that's why my recommendations have been to be proactive and not wait for a positive confirmed case.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you for having me.
Thank you, doctor, for coming. Appreciate it.
And plus, please, again, reach out.
We may see you again in-
Yes.
-April, very possibly. This may happen again in April. It depends how the roller coaster goes.
Right.
That's all I can say.
In February, Dr. Carter said that it may require up to three months until things calm down. So again, this is just one of the variable. We don't know for sure.
We do not.
We'll keep an eye on that. Thank you.
And Brian, I was contacted by New Haven right at the end of the day today, so I gave them your email and phone number as well as mine for that connectivity that they were looking for, just so you know. All right. Okay. That completes Dr. Mohammed's presentation to us. Is there anybody, if you want to part, this is your moment, if you want to stay for the rest of our excitement, that is more than welcome as well.
No offense taken.
We did start at 7 o'clock on that, so, thank you. I, yeah, but that, you people vote on the chair. I sent that back to you, that the board votes on the chair.
I didn't get that.
Oh.
But that's good to know.
Yes. I replied that it, that's up to you guys.
Okay.
Yeah. You, guess, guess where that's going?
Yeah.
Okay. Now that we are back to our regular meeting, is there a motion to close the regular meeting and open the public hearing?
Some move.
Okay. All right. The public hearing. Anne, do you want to read the call for the public hearing on this?
Town of Orange Notice of Public Hearing. Notice is hereby given to the residents and taxpayers of the Town of Orange that in accordance with Section 3.4 of the Charter of the Town of Orange, that the Orange Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing in the lower level of the Orange Town Hall, 617 Orange Center Road, at 7:00 PM on Wednesday, March 11, 2020, on the proposal set forth below, to consider and act on the proposed repeal to the Town of Orange, Connecticut Code, Chapter 204, Dance Halls and Other Public Entertainment. At the hearing, the Board of Selectmen will take public comment. Orange residents and taxpayers are invited to attend and express their views, dated at Orange, Connecticut, this 20th day of February 2020, Town of Orange Board of Selectmen.
Okay. As you know, we've had this, and many of us have voted on these for years as they come in sporadically. It's like Grassy Hill Country Club, the Porgaset Club, Race for Country Club, Ale House, and a few other places. This actually was something that's left over from like the days of prohibition and that, prior to the days when we actually had a, I can say this after thinking about it from last night, a full-time, a fire marshal that was going around doing inspections of all of these facilities and all. And so it's something that was left behind. And Tim Smith had started on this quite a while ago about eliminating this, had talked with Vin about this. And you'll see there's a email attached in there from our, it's listed as deputy when he wrote it, but Jamie Vincent was sworn in as our full-time fire marshal last night. And it's time has come really to update. You're going to be getting some other updates on things, on fee changes and different stuff as well with time. But this was one, the one that was submitted for this month regarding that. Questions? Mitchell?
One for Vincent, actually. With the cost of having to publish these, and the fact that there's no real urgency with this because we just heard them, and we won't hear them again for probably another year, is it possible to combine or make the effectiveness date of the elimination of this coincide with some other things we may be listening to concerning fees, which are part of an ordinance, and then combine them with the register? Or are we obliged to publish within so many days of our action?
The effective, it doesn't become effective until 15 days after publication. So the, but how is that a cost savings?
Well, publishing, publishing the paper, if we can combine this publication, since there's no urgency to this.
But you still have to print the whole-
Right. But you don't have to print some of the beginning and the end and having a separate ad. I, I just try and look out for some practicality here if there's any, anything to be add. If you think there's not, then fine.
You're going to be, you're repealing.
Yep.
So it's, you're not changing the ordinance.
Right.
Right? So what is there to publish?
I don't know. Do we have to publish the-
Do you have to publish the-
The entire-
The paragraph or page in entirety?
That's being, that's being eliminated.
That I would look into. This would be, today, we're just setting it for public hearing.
No, this is the public.
Oh, this is the public.
This is the public hearing.
Good.
So that's-
Good. We've been wanting to get rid of this for years.
Right. So now, so my question is, should we, should we-
Posted this last night.
Should we not act on this tonight and act on it along with something else in the future, or make the effective date later in the future?
Do you have anything else coming up?
With these fees.
There's some fee changes coming up, I believe, some of which are going to be ordinance-driven, I believe.
Absolutely.
John has been working on some of those, I believe. He's so excited in the back of the room that I'm not getting a response out of him.
All right. So if you, if you advance tonight-
Yep.
You can set an effective date out into the future.
Yep.
Because this really doesn't come around again until next, next year. So you have plenty of time. And then I'll look into whether or not there's an actual cost savings. I mean, what we're doing is you're, you're going to be publishing notice of your action. Your action is to repeal.
Right.
Not to amend and modify.
Okay.
So I think it's going to be as simple as putting a notice as on, on such, on March 11, 2020, Board of Selectmen took action to repeal section of the Town Charter.
Yep.
Period. And it's repealed. I, I believe it's going to be as simple as that because there's nothing to publish.
So you won't have to publish the whole paragraph?
I don't, I don't believe so, but I'll verify that.
Okay.
Okay?
Then let me just ask, let me just go ahead for a second, then, for the, the questions that we're going to see later tonight about fee applications. Are those part of ordinances, or are those partings that have to be published? I imagine they do, if we change the fees.
See which ones they are, because some are and some aren't.
Exactly. It depends on what, which ones you're doing.
Yeah. We're doing zoning and-
Zoning, I believe, zoning R.
Zoning R, but-
Okay.
Building, I believe, they-
All right.
Did on a schedule-
Yes.
Outside of the ordinance.
So let me just ask ahead here, I'm sorry to do this. The fees that we look at later, Jim, is there an effective date we're going to make those? Is it, is there going to be some time period in between that we want, give a lot of notice, July, July 1st?
I would do it with fiscal year.
July 1st, okay.
If you're asking, my opinion, yeah.
And then with that in mind, since we're in the public hearing here, I am all for-
That'll give time for him to do research on that.
I am all for eliminating the dance hall and pool hall, they call it public entertainment, permits. And, and my suggestion, we get to make a motion on this later, is to make it July 1, effective July 1. And that should give-
Yeah, that's plenty of time. Okay.
Okay.
All right. That's fine. Anybody else on this? Wait a minute. No, wait a minute. Wait, wait. We're still in public hearing.
But is there any discussion on it?
Any other discussion on it? Seeing none. Is there a motion to close the public hearing? Was there anybody in the audience who wanted to ask on this? You all look so excited.
Second.
Okay. Motion is made in second and to close. Okay. Very good. Is there a, a motion to be made on this? Selectmen, Goldblock?
I'll make a motion that we, we, I guess the word's eliminate, right? Is it the right word?
Repeal.
Repeal. Thank you. Repeal Chapter 204, Dance Halls and Other Public Entertainment, effective July 1, 2020.
Correct.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Stay? Unanimous? Okay. Public participation. Public participation is for any item that is not an agenda item. We allow up to two minutes per speaker on that. Is there anybody in the audience for public participation? Seeing none. Is there anybody at the table with public participation items? Mitchell?
Shredding Day is still on. April 25th, High Plains Community Center. Two things of note here. One is the fact that last time, I did mention that the Orange Community Women would be collecting clothing and other small items. They are not going to be able to do it this time. So our shredding day will be limited to just the paper shredding as well as the mattress collection. Mattress collection, to contact Ken Lenz at the, with the Lions Club. They will pick up for $10 donation. And we ask people, based on the Rotary Club generously sponsoring the, the shredding day, that they, if they're able to give a donation, if they're bringing significant shredding, things to be shredded. Which brings me to point two. And this goes along with things we've been discussing at this table for the last several months about the cost of recycling. The shredding day is, is still being sponsored by the Rotary Club. It is costing us more than ever before because the paper market has bottomed out. Instead of our shredding vendor being paid for the paper that goes to be recycled after shredded, he has to pay them at this point. And we are very fortunate, the Rotary Club has stepped up and is picking up the additional costs. And the reason I bring that to your attention is because if you have things to be shredded, they're sitting in the closet or in the file cabinets, now is the time because we don't know going forward how much this cost will, will incur. So I can't necessarily at this moment promise a second shredding day this year. So I just want to urge people, if they are interested, please bring your, your items this time around, especially if you've got those, those files, those tax returns or medical records that you want to have shredded, to bring them April 25th, 9 to noon, High Plains Community Center. And mattresses. Thank you.
Thank you. Just to tie onto what Mitch had said on that item, it, it's a really unfortunate problem. While we have trained so many people to recycle stuff and pull that blue bin out to their front, their driveway every week or every other week, however, where we used to receive $20 a ton in revenue, we're now paying, I think, $80 a ton, or it's getting there pretty quickly, a ton to dispose of it. And a lot of the material that you think that you're putting in there doing a wonderful job recycling is being incinerated. A lot of your plastics and all, since it's not going to Asia anymore like it had been, that market is lost, it's being incinerated. A lot of the paper is being incinerated or landfill buried. It's not being recycled. It's really a very sad situation. But keep up the good work, and hopefully some people in America will start doing more with recycling glass and recycling- with recycling glass and recycling plastics and all the other products. But at this point, you're doing a great job out there recycling, but it's not being recycled the majority of it.
Jim, any comment on that?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's unfortunate, some of the things that have been happening, although it is still the law to recycle. It's still costing us less to get rid of recycling than it is for the waste that goes to municipal, solid waste. And with this in mind, the Orange Recycling Committee is, at the end of this month, going to take a field trip to Oak Ridge Waste, which is in Shelton, which is where our recycling goes. We're meeting with the principals there to see how the operation works and to get some more information about, you know, what happens, what doesn't happen, and what is, what we're seeing in contamination. We're gonna see the orange recycling, please no plastic bags, I don't wanna see those there. But to get more education for us, so we can help educate the public as to what should or should not be recycled, because if it is contaminated, it will go and be incinerated, as Jim had said.
And actually, just so you know, our finance director has done a calculation on this, and if we stopped all recycling tomorrow, I believe we would save over, and it all went to MSW, the town would save over $150,000 a year, I believe, immediately, just by stopping the recycling. So it's a state unfunded mandate at this point, but it is a law, so, but it, it's in excess $150,000 beyond, but what's your environment worth? You can't measure.
But if it's costing us, if it's costing us less, how is it costing, I mean, if it's costing us less per ton than the MSW, how is it then costing us more? I don't understand.
Because now that we're paying per ton for it, as opposed to it being hauled away, plus paying for the house-to-house pickup, don't forget that.
Okay.
We pay for every house in town, and we only have about a 33% to 35% participation rate, but the pickup people get paid for every door.
Yep.
Which is like, about 5,000 doors. So, yeah. So that's it. And John did have a spreadsheet on it at one point, if you're interested, contact him and he'd probably email it to you. I don't know if he still has it, but probably. Yes, Ralph?
Mitch, has anything changed in terms of what's recyclable from the presentation that the woman from Hartford held here back in last June?
I don't, I don't believe anything since then has changed, Ralph. There, I think, there are things that have changed over the years. You know, certainly wanna make sure, as I said, that there's no bags put in, but pizza boxes are okay. And, you know, plastics that have a number on them with the recycle number, if it's not, as long as it's not plastic bags or something you can crumble up.
But nothing since that lady was here.
Since she was here, no, so it's, it's still the same. And anything that's really small should not be recycled, like little pill bottles, caps that are not on top of the bottles, should not be recycled, because they like the bags, jam the machinery.
And then I was surprised with the coffee cups.
Yeah.
Because they have some kind of line, plastic liner, resin or whatnot on the inside, so coffee cups should not go into recycling, even though they look like they're paper.
Okay, question, Dunkin' Donuts has changed their cups from styrofoam to some kind of paper. Is that recyclable?
No.
That is not recyclable.
Just the same thing with Judy said.
Use your ceramic mug and wash it.
That's actually the best thing, is to use reusable things, but most, most of the, the cups you get at restaurants are not. Once again, if you have a cup like we have here that has a number on the bottom there, that is, this is recyclable. But cutlery is not, and, and, you know, you should go to, I gotta get it right, recyclect.org, I believe it is, I'll have to check it. But there's, there's a website the state puts out for DEP, it's very simple, you go on there and just type in the item, it tells you right away to throw it away or put it in the bin.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else at the table have any announcements? If not, I only have a couple here tonight. We had a couple town people losses, and the most recent, Bob Fideros, who was our chairman of the Board of Health for many years and extremely involved, and among many things he did, passed away a couple, few weeks ago now. And this week, Sal DiNicolò, you may have seen it in the newspaper, Sal DiNicolò was the Town of Orange's first park and recreation director. Yes.
Sal DiNicolò.
Yeah, and John DiNicolò, who was our IT person, who started under Mitch and continued under me, also, it was his uncle. So we lost two people that had provided good service to the town for many years, and our thoughts go out to those people. Yes, Mitchell?
Thank you. You're talking about Bob Fidero, and you mentioned Board of Health. Bob Fidero, for those that don't know, and it should be mentioned, was also the chairman of the committee that set up the remembrance walk up at High Plains, and did a wonderful job of spearheading that committee. And the bricks and the whole layout you see out there, a lot of that has to do with his leadership.
Well, he had a big, he was very involved with the veterans as well. I didn't go into that. He used to run a big concert every year down in New Haven at Woolsey Hall. That was phenomenal. I was invited to it and went a couple times to it, and he was really very involved in the veterans as well, one of his many things. Happy St. Patrick's Day, everybody, that's our next issue. Even though all the parades have been canceled, I thought we had hope for Milford, but that got canceled today, so there are no parades here. And, but I would like to congratulate from all the Board of Selectmen, Seamus Bowen, who was this year's New Haven Parade Grand Marshal, is an Orange resident. And unfortunately, they'll be living the green but won't be walking the green line down Chapel Street this year. So congratulations, Seamus, and hopefully they'll use you next year. I, I hope they will. My last public announcement, I am changing law firms for the Town of Orange for our general practice. I am eliminating Cohen and Wolf. They are no longer our legal representation of the Town of Orange. I had enough of them and threw them out. And we will, I am signing up a new law firm, which happens to go under the name of Marino, Zabel, and Schellenberg. And we welcome our new law firm onboard. How's that?
We look forward to the new relationship.
So, enough said there.
Thank you.
Um, yes.
With the elderly. With the elderly.
Okay, if there's. Yes, I've been assured that we will have, actually, the principals of the new firm are the people that have mostly providing the coverage to us from the old firm. So it's, the continuity should be fine.
Excellent.
Any other announcements? Seeing none, minutes of our February 12 meeting. Were there any errors, omissions, or corrections? If not, if there are, state page and paragraph, if not, a motion will be accepted.
Sub moved.
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Unanimous? Okay. New business. Woo-hoo! This is why we started starting this up. To consider and act on the name of the official designated site for tribute trees planted by the Tree Committee at the High Plains Community Center, Gail Nixon is here, and there is a little map and document provided here. Gail?
Thank you, James, and good evening to everyone.
Good evening.
My name, I'm, hi, Gail Nixon, 11 Muirfield Road, Orange. I'm a member of the Town of Orange Tree Committee. The Tree Committee was formed 24 years ago in 1996, and in 2006, the Tree Committee initiated a tribute tree program as a way for people to honor and show appreciation for individuals or organizations. To date, more than 35 trees have been planted on public land. Soon after the tribute tree program was established, former First Selectman, or Woman, Dorothy Berger, told the Tree Committee that the tree planting areas should be officially designated in order that the tree locations could be easily identified. To that end, we have trees planted on Tyler City Esplanade, eight trees right across from the library, the Tyler City Mini Park, right across here behind the Stone Otis House, and Weppawog Meadow in the Howard D. Brooks Weppawog Conservation Area, High Plains Southwest Lawn at the High Plains Community Center, and at Racebrook Track. At the tribute tree planting ceremony, certificates and site plans are presented, certificate naming the person or organized, organization honored, and a site plan naming the planting location is presented to the donor of the tree. Copies of the certificate and site plan are kept in the tribute tree book in the office of the town clerk. Therefore, anyone who is looking for a specific tree can go to that book, and on the site plan, it would point out the location, and instead of just saying, oh, it's at High Plains Community Center, or it's on Tyler City Road, they would know more specifically where it's located. Recently, three tribute trees were planted on the south side of High Plains Community Center, one tree in the playground, and two trees on the driveway side of the tennis courts. I'm here to request that the Board of Selectmen officially designate these locations, currently Power Line Road, as Tribute Trace or Trail, and the driveway as Tribute Way, as shown on the plan submitted to you, obviously not drawn by a professional engineer.
It's suffice.
And also, the Tree Committee has two vacancies. The Committee strongly requests your assistance in helping us fill those vacancies. We say this is a feel-good committee. And please spread the word. Thank you very much for your consideration.
And are you suggestions on Mrs. Nixon's requests? Any problems with that? Any thoughts? Mitchell?
I will make a motion if it's appropriate.
Well, I, I need to ask which, which name of.
I'm gonna make a part, I'm gonna make a part of the motion, if you don't mind, if that's all right.
Yes, I'm sorry, Mitch.
I will make a motion that we rename Power Line Road as Tribute Trail, and that the driveway leading to High Plains Community Center from the new Tribute Trail be called Tribute Way.
Thank you.
If that's appropriate.
Yes.
Oh, there you go, that's fine. All right.
All right.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Good, thank you.
We have, we have two trees to be planted, too, we'll have to talk about.
Oh, good.
Yes, we have two that are gonna be.
Before you leave, could you tell a little bit about the Committee and when do you meet and stuff, so if people are out there listening, someone might be interested?
Well, it's five members on the Committee. Phil Grandy is currently the chairman of the Committee, and we.
Phil Grandy Jr.
Junior. And we meet, well.
Quarterly.
Yeah, quarterly, that's a good answer. Quarterly. We also have Travis Ewen, who's a landscape architect, has joined the Committee.
Judy, would you like to be a Selectman representative on that Committee? They don't meet that often.
It's a really, as I say, it's fun.
Fill one of the two spots.
Well, really, because Judy has interest in the land and in trees and all that sort of thing, and it might be something, I know Margaret's gonna be going to emergency management. And I know Judy, you know, has a thing that, that might be a.
Ann Denny's a former member.
Yeah, she's, Ann Denny has enough things, I keep her, between her husband and I, we keep her plenty busy now.
I just thought I'd mention that she was a former member.
She also used to get out of work at 3:00, and her husband says he used to get home from work and dinner was ready. Now, it's not happening, he says.
Oh, dear.
Gail, while you're there, real quick, if someone wanted to put together a tribute tree, they would obviously contact your Committee. Is there a single price for a tribute tree?
Yes. I believe the tree is $500.
Thank you.
And that includes, should the tree die in the first 12 months, it would be replaced. And it includes planting and maintenance, and a plaque which is placed in the ground with the name of the person or organization being honored.
I know, I know one of the, at least one of the two, I think we still have room over here for one cherry.
Yes.
And one will be a cherry that's going over there, and then the other one, we haven't decided yet. But, yeah.
Wonderful.
Just so you know.
Okay.
We'll talk about it next week.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Item number two is to consider and act on a request for a tax abatement from Terrello Bus Company. Joe Terrello has been sitting in the audience very patiently. He's overwhelmed with our excitement of our items tonight. You were provided with all of their info, his request letter is on the front, I don't know if that's him or his father, I'm not sure, it's kinda one of the same. And then there's the revenue from Amity and from Orange Elementary, there is the state statute, which you see is a very short statute, it's, on mine, it's the third item in the packet. And then the vehicle that they're requesting the abatement on, and, this, oh, this was the original letter, and then they had to change it. There was, once the assessor looked at it, it was a little variation, is the best I'll say. But there was an error that happened the last time we gave the Terrelos an abatement. So, this isn't overly a problem, but there was a miscommunication between our action and the assessor. And it turns out, and I don't have those documents with me, you didn't bring those, all yours, did you? The ones that Mark had given us? We gave an abatement for one new bus, but on Mark, it didn't quite make it across the hall in that same manner, and you actually got abatements for four buses. Yeah. And so, this one.
All new?
Huh?
All new.
Evidently. And so then there was a fifth bus, which is this bus that Joe Terrello Senior has been back and forth on the phone with Mark. That's a supplemental bill, that one that came in somewhere midstream, so when they're not in by October 1st, you get a supplemental bill on any motor vehicle, it hits somewhere in between. So there's an outstanding bill for one that Mark had missed at the time, which happens to be the one that Joe Terrello Senior, and he talked about on the phone, I'll say multiple times in the last couple days. It's about $800 and some odd dollars, you didn't include that right, no. So, what would happen actually would be, if you agreed to abate that request, it would just match up with the other ones that Mark had already done, and then they all go back on, they're all, it's a one-year abatement when they came on, so they would all go on, they're all going on the July 1st tax run anyhow.
Is this something we do for all the buses?
Only if it's requested, no.
And is this something we do, for instance, when we have contractors, i.e., you know, we hire the contractors to come do snow plowing, removal, and stuff like that, and I'm just curious, is that, they get a new truck? I mean, how do we distinguish?
That's, that's a different thing. This statute that's before you, page three, only speaks to school buses. And the only one we've ever had the request from at this time is from Terrell.
So, okay.
We have done it in the past, I think we've had two requests over the years, but this last one, Mark kinda got botched up a little bit.
Okay. So. They paid for four instead of one, the last one.
We granted four.
Four.
So all it'll do is just clarify the fifth one, and then come July, they go on the tax rolls anyhow, because the other ones have already been done, so that, they've already received that abatement. So this time they go on the tax rolls anyhow. Okay? Now they bought another new bus, but those have, they haven't even gotten a supplemental on that yet, so that's down the road. All right?
I just have one question.
Yep. Yep.
Do I have to say name and all that?
Yeah, you should.
Joe Torrello, 85 Norman Street, Orange, Connecticut. The first one was for three buses, so I only have five new ones. First one was for three. We're doing the one right now that I just got the supplemental bill. And then we have another one that we haven't gotten anything on yet, cause it just got registered.
Correct.
So why are you saying four?
Because according to Mark's sheet, he abated four. And I don't have the sheet in front of me, do you have that sheet?
Yeah.
Yeah. There were four, the assessor abated four buses.
Okay.
That's, we found that out this afternoon about-
Yeah, it's just something new to me too.
He wandered in with the paper. So, that's, that's why. And you can, we can give you the paper and you'll see the, the ones that were abated and the one that was the outstanding.
The one where-
Yeah. The one that's on for tonight. Yes, Judy?
So how can we have an invisible bus?
No, it wasn't invisible.
If we've abated four, then have we already abated this one?
It was missed. No, this one was missed. I think it was a supplemental that came in part way and Mark didn't pick it up or something happened in the paperwork. Not, not their, not, not their, not their paperwork.
They're all registered and inspected though.
It wasn't their paperwork. It wasn't their paperwork. But it's okay.
Three buses and then two new ones.
No, no, he has 13 buses right now, I think. 13 or 15, I don't know what he's got, but-
New ones though, yeah.
Well, buses.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Some of them are used.
Now, it doesn't count the one you just got, that's not-
No, that one's not even on the table yet. That hasn't even come to you guys yet.
Just that, just that paper with the colored marks on it, that's it.
Marks of all these.
Yeah, no, that colored one, no, I don't need all that, this one. Yeah, see, if you go through this, and there's the one that was missed, right there, that's the one that he and your father have been talking about.
That's the one we're doing right now.
Right now.
Yes.
That's the one. Then these other ones, the others, no, nothing outstanding.
Yeah.
So if you track it back, see over here? Total tax, total tax, total tax, should be another one on this page, total tax. Those are the ones that were, he already, he already did. Yeah, so this is the one right here that your father's talking about.
Yes.
Okay. So see, that's, what are this?
I see, that's the difference is, cause he goes by something, the number, I think that's why I had to go take pictures of all the license plate on it.
It's probably part of the ID.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then, let's see, what's this here?
That's Mark's assessor.
Oh, these are the assessor's ID, that's exactly what you're talking about, why you had to do it. This is the assessor sheets that go with it. So this is the sheets for the four that were abated. So, I don't, you-
But like you said, it goes by marker plate, so you don't have them in there.
So this is not a required thing to do. It's an option, if you read the statute, it is an option. Um, when the Torrelos have requested it, they have the right to request it. And you have the right to accept or reject, um, at any time on it. It's not mandatory, um, but we have done it in the past. Any other discussion on it?
A question, Jim, for clarification. So, the ordinance, or the, I'm sorry, the statute says the Board of Selectmen may abate up to 100% of property taxes due for any assessment year. So, are we voting on this each year?
We only give them for one year, the one year that they're new.
Very good. Thank you.
Yep.
And we gotta come back every time, correct? For each bus, each new bus that we purchase, right?
Right.
Cause that was the confusion.
Yes. Yep. And then the confusion on, that crossed the hall was, we did one, you got four. I don't know, but that's the paperwork, that's all I can tell you. So is there any discussion on this? Don't be bashful just cause Joe is standing here. He's a big boy and we're big children too, so.
I, I think it's very hard to deny it if we've already done four.
Mm-hmm. And they will all come for the July 1st bills that will be coming, they will then all be on the tax rolls anyhow, cause they, other ones have already received their abatement in the past. The time is expiring.
What's the value that we're approving?
It's an $800, um-
Oh, it's $800?
It doesn't come up in our motion, Ralph, but it would be-
Eight, nine?
Eight, 18 would be it, or with interest in penalty, eight, 54, 93, because there was a little confusion. So you're abating eight, 54, 93 today.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve. Second.
Any other discussion? My discussion will be, I don't know how many more of these we're gonna do, Joe. I brought in over a million two in new Korean list growth this year and the schools are eating the money up and some other requests faster than I can bring in economic development. So, but this year, it sounds like they're all in favor of covering this. So it should be fine.
Thank you very much.
Um, motion made, motion seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. Done.
Thank you.
I'll go to bed, get ready for your flight.
Thank you, Liam, good night.
All right.
Cost of trash keeps going up.
Yeah. Okay, let's see. To consider an act on bid recommendation for replacement of pool pump, High Plains Community Center, Bob Britton is in the room. Bob Britton has a couple of things tonight.
Yeah, I'm saying it was gonna be, bring him up to top of the agenda.
Yeah.
I still are.
We haven't got too far yet.
Okay, um, yeah, the couple of purchases. The main pool pump, 15 horsepower, runs 24 hours a day, seven days a week. There is a backup pump that we could manually turn on. It overheats though, so it's not dependable. Um, so what we're gonna, what the plan is, is, we actually, we already bought the new pump, this is for installation. Put the new, new pump in as the main pump, take the old pump that works well and make that the backup pump. It, it also includes a variable frequency drive, so we'll have an ability to control the pump speed and control the flow. Right now, we just have to shut, shut valves partway. Uh, anyway, we got five bids, um, which are set out in front of you. The low bid was 14,000, Connecticut Hydronics, the company from, um, Nogatuck, does mostly mechanical plumbing, HVAC. Second bid, Rotolo Mechanical, 15,075, similar, um, work. I checked the, um, references for Connecticut Hydronics, I'd never worked with them before, but they had good recommendations. Some of you may know Rotolo Mechanical, the owner lives in town and they've done good work as well. But I didn't have any reason not to recommend the low bidder.
The, the difference, Bob, when I was looking over the two bids, was that Rotolo Mechanical was installing some new parts regarding this system, whereas Connecticut Hydronics was reusing the old. Was the thousand dollar difference here, just so you know. Uh, it was exactly the new parts versus reusing the old parts.
Yeah, we gave the bidders the option of reusing a control panel and starter, which is on one of the motors and some of the bidders are gonna try and use that and other ones are just gonna buy a new one.
So for your two low bidders, that was exactly the difference, is new versus, versus reusing the existing.
All right, and, and I believe when you're dealing with plumbing issues and stuff like that, it's kind of important to keep everything up to date, especially even the panel to operate. So my question is, if, if Connecticut Hydronics comes in and sets the whole thing up and then all of a sudden realizes, panel's not gonna work, we really need to get, replace it with a new one. So then we're right back-
Well, if you get a new one, you probably got warranty. If you reuse the old one, we put in your old one, that's how we did it.
Right, right. So I, I don't know.
All right. John, you had your hand up?
I'm a little nervous.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, didn't Rotolo Mechanical work on the pool already?
Yeah, these are the number-
The locker rooms.
Yeah. And don't we have experience with, with the services he's provided versus somebody we don't even know?
They did, I think, did they do the south wing too, Mitch?
They were the-
Or so they were subcontractors.
Yeah, subcontractor, and I know he did work at Turkey Hill School also. Um, the, the biggest, the only difference is, cause I wanted to know what the difference was between the two low bids and it's new versus you, reusing the existing equipment.
I think you go with new, any day of the week, plumbing.
Especially plumbing, especially.
I think you're opening a can of worms right there. That's just my personal opinion.
They're all reputable people, but that's the difference.
You guys are the Board of Selectmen, I didn't feel it was my place.
No, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not saying that any of them aren't reputable. I'm, I'm just saying that we have some experience with Rotolo Mechanical and-
Did you have any problems with them, Mitch, through your projects?
Not at all. Bob, question I just have, whether we go with Hydronics or Rotolo? The money is coming from your budget, coming from where?
This is, I believe, the encumbered money that was put aside. We purchased the materials during the renovation job.
We're getting a nod, yes, encumbered funds.
Yeah, John, John's, yes. It's like, it's capital fund, but not-
You should look at it.
We, we have money, the finance director has assured me.
Just assured rest of us too.
All right, Mitchell, you have, when are you making a motion then?
I'll make a motion, with, with all due respect to, um, the current recommendation. My recommendation would be to use Rotolo Mechanical for the amount of 15,075.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I will abstain on that. Due to the fact that they are very close and other reasons, I don't wish to put my name on it. To consider an act on bid for Clark Building Roof Removal and Replacement, this is the second time around on this one as well.
Yeah, so I, I believe you have, um, a spreadsheet with the bids, we got quite a few bids.
Yeah, that's good.
I don't have a recommendation for you, so I'll just give you the, the update. The low bidder is Scholar Painting, 34,030. I did check some references and the majority were good. There's one that was a little off. And I have been wanting to, wanna meet with the actual project manager or foreman, go over the jobs, cause they are something like 40% below the next bid. And as Jim mentioned, we had already awarded this in the fall, who were, who ended up being the second low bidder this time. I wouldn't consider that contractor at all, they showed up.
Which one was that?
Shoreline Restoration. They showed up, looked at the job and refused to do it for the amount bid, so I wouldn't.
Wow.
Well, do you recall what their bid was last time?
28,000 and change.
Okay, so they figured it out this time.
Yeah.
Bob, do you know if there is, and I should've asked you this prior to right now, is there one roof or two shingle roofs on there? Do you know?
The part I looked at, there was only one layer, yeah.
Okay, and which part was that?
Um, I was looking when I was, so not the front, the, the back roof, yeah.
All right, the reason, something to consider here very strongly then two, is the price per sheet of plywood. If there's, if there's only one roof on there, there's a very strong possibility that they might be replacing a sheet or a lot of sheets of underlayment on there. And at 175 dollars a sheet to take off plywood, that's, that's a lot of money. If, God forbid, they needed to put a pallet of plywood down, which is 50 sheets, you know, that's considerable.
That's huge.
Yeah.
So I would say the options are, if you want me to, um, meet, meet with a low bidder and, and try to get a better recommendation, we could table it. The last thing I was gonna say, and I already told you why I wouldn't recommend the second low bidder, if we don't end up going with a low bidder, then the third low bidder, AVT Construction, I had checked the references last time and we awarded the Fair Barnes to them. I think it was a, those are sim, much simpler jobs, but they, they did a good job.
They did, they did an excellent job.
They were hitting it out in two days, I mean-
Yeah, they roofed both of those buildings like lickety-split.
And is that 92 dollars a sort of a consistent, it seemed pretty consistent.
It's a little more in line, it's still a little bit high, but it's a little more in line.
Yeah, Ralph had a question on that. Hopefully, we don't need to use it at all, it's just if you have rotted.
Yeah, well, I mean, again, it depends on the-
The whole idea of getting the, the price now is so you're not arguing in the middle of construction and-
Oh, absolutely. So do people have a preference to, to table it so that you can go back and talk to Scholar Painting, or do, do we wanna?
Right, that's what I was gonna ask, do, yeah, do you need the time to talk and then, and then come back to us?
Yeah, I wouldn't award it to Scholar Painting tonight, if you want me to investigate them further, I'll do that.
I, I'd like to meet with them with you if you're gonna do that.
Sure.
I think I need to be there.
So then I'll make a motion to table, uh, this particular bid request until you report back to us?
Second.
Till the April meeting.
Till the April meeting.
We'll meet with them between now and then.
Yeah. All right.
Okay. Item is tabled.
Can I vote?
Yeah.
All in favor of that?
Aye.
Opposed? Staying unanimous. Okay. To consider an act on approval of the bid recommendation for the street sweeping, Bob Britton.
All right, we had, uh, two bidders. The low bidder this time was Tri-State Industrial Maintenance. The most recent contract that we're still under is the NYM Group, uh, and they were the high bidder this time, Tri-State, we had the previous, um, term. And so, you know, Don, Don Ford's worked with both of them, they both sweep streets the same way, so I would recommend going with the lowest price.
And this year, it's the western side of town, half of town, that's being swept. Last year was the eastern side of town.
Motion made to approve Tri-State Industrial Maintenance LLC for the, uh, street sweeping for this year, based on the bids that have been presented, low bidder.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staying unanimous.
Thank you. See you in April.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Bob, just have Ian find out when, you know, when you set that up, preferably mornings. Item six, consider an act on request to increase the base, base fee for all zoning applications. Yeah, we'll take it back from zoning. Now, we don't need a public hearing for zoning?
It's by the ordinance. It's by the ordinance, yes, you'd have to refer to public hearing, uh, cause it's not in the regulation.
Okay.
Make a motion that we, we set a public hearing for the beginning of our April meeting for the request to increase base fee on all zoning applications.
Okay. Second made, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staying unanimous. Okay. To consider an act on request to increase High Plains Community Center rental fees and custodial rates, John Zaffarelli, now this one does not need, um, a public hearing.
We're gonna have to clarify also, because I didn't see anything where we have to publish this in the paper either.
Which means we don't need a public hearing.
Okay. Okay, so what, what you're seeing is, we asked all the departments to look at their fees, cause apparently they hadn't been raised in a long time, this, these particular fees, the last time they were raised in 2010. So, uh, we've had a few union contracts since then with the custodians and under the current union contract, we're actually losing a little money over there every time we open up the doors on Saturday and Sunday. So I basically raised the custodial fees according to what the union contract is for the custodians over there, a time and a half and double time on Saturday and Sunday. Then for the rooms and community rooms, those hadn't been raised since action of the Board of Selectmen on June 9th, 2010 also. So I raised those probably about 20 dollars on each of them across the board. And I think, uh, as I said in the letter, costs have gone up over there for labor, uh, water, electricity. We've also renovated the building quite a bit, so I don't think these fees are unreasonable with what they're getting over there.
John, I got a question for you, which is kind of off topic, but who sets the fees then for, this is our High Plains, who sets the fees for utilizing the upper or lower pavilions on the outside?
Park and Rec.
That doesn't go through us? Or is that separate?
Whatever Park and Rec brings to your board. At one time, they had to bring quite a bit of stuff. They've been asked to raise their fees also, so they should be coming in.
They'll be coming in.
And I'll be coming back to you as the police contract is writing for the police special duty fees.
All right.
Wetlands, you'll also have next month the okay fee increases last night at their meeting.
You've been busy.
They've been busy. I just have to-
Catching up.
So, if I can, and I know, let's vote on this, before John leaves, I wanna ask a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
No, let's vote on this first.
Oh.
I'll make a motion, we approve the, the new fees as proposed for High Plains custodial rates, moving the current rates, you know, from time and a half to thirty-six to fifty dollars.
As prescribed.
As presented.
Yeah.
Give me a start date for it also.
July one?
July, do it to fiscal year.
July one.
Even though we're losing money.
Can you implement it? Can they implement it in time before that?
Why not? I was thinking like April one. You just gave away a little money tonight. I'm trying to make it back.
Well, you didn't speak against anything.
Make it May first, then.
All right, motion for May first, then.
That way it'll give Sylvie time to, and then to implement it.
You got that, Bob?
Yeah, and if anybody's reserved a room, I assume we'll honor their-
They're, yeah, they're already covered yet. Okay, now what was your question?
Let's vote on this first.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staying, okay.
Thank you. John, you just mentioned that Wetlands is coming forward fees also. Those are also gonna be part of an ordinance. So is it possible to add to the agenda, Mr. First Selectman and Mr. Town Attorney, that we just quickly add to the agenda tonight to discuss, even without them in front of us, to put Wetlands fees as part of a public hearing for next month?
I have a copy of the Wetlands, so if Ian wants to run up-
So we do the zoning Wetlands together, next month?
If you're, if you're so inclined. It's a regular meeting, so you could add anything to the agenda. Are the, the Wetlands voted to recommend them to the Selectmen yet?
Yeah, I have, I have the letter that went out today to-
Yes.
I make a motion to add to the agenda tonight, that we did, put on the, on the agenda tonight for discussion of, or putting forth-
Public hearing.
For a public hearing for the Wetland, increasing Wetlands fees.
So then you'll have zoning and Wetlands for April.
Right. So they'll add to the agenda.
Yes.
In a second.
Motion to add it to the agenda. Is there a second? Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staying unanimous. Done.
So now that's on the agenda.
Okay, Ian, you wanna make a copy of this, so they can-
Well, we won't need it tonight.
Wait, wait, just, just, now I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Now I'll make a motion to bring the public hearing in April, the Wetlands fees, along with the zoning fees.
Right. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Margaret, okay, very good. Let's keep it going here, kids. Okay, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staying unanimous. Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Next one is another, John.
Yeah, I didn't even know that.
Another one's a building.
Where are we? Consider an act on request to approve tax refunds in the month of March, totaling seven thousand two hundred forty-nine dollars eighty-two cents. Motion made. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Item nine, to consider an act on request to put on the suspense list, the unpaid taxes of, from sixteen, the amount of forty thousand seven oh six oh seven. That does not mean they are not going to collect them. That means that they are moved there, so they're not listed as a liability on the audit, is what that means.
So moved.
Okay, motion made. There might be somebody in there you might know, I don't know.
There is.
Is there?
Somebody's here tonight. Check him.
Oh, really? Now he's got my curiosity.
Yeah.
Not if he, not if he just tabled, no. Jim, who's responsible for collecting this money? Is it the tax collector?
Yep.
Or the-
Tax collector.
The constable.
Well, they designate to the constables.
Well, that still comes out of the tax office.
I noticed a couple of these people on here, too.
That's why I'm not gonna collect them.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
Good luck with that.
Can I ask, what is the suspense book?
Good job, good job. So-
Ask the question again, Margaret. I was, I'm trying to figure out who Mitch thought tonight. Now I gotta go look at it after.
What is the suspense book?
The suspense is, it's a book that moves them from the active liabilities of taxes owed, to a book that is, they are suspended, they're over here. They still chase those, attempting to collect them, whether it be from a person living in town, out of state, or in a state even in some cases. But it's not listed in the liabilities of our debt when the auditors do our audit for fiscal year. Is that a pretty fair summation?
And then they do keep trying to collect.
Yeah, oh yeah.
That happened fifteen years ago.
Gotta vote on the, the motion.
Motion made, seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Now we have committees, and we do have a couple things under personnel, and they weren't, things that needed to be in executive session. They're relatively easy and will be presented at that time. Pension board?
Yes, we met last month, and good news, bad news. The good news is that we ended the year very, the year very strong, ending December thirty-first. Our pension funds were up by nineteen point four percent for the entire year, six percent alone in the last quarter. The bad news is, what I don't know, is how we're doing this quarter, which can't be good. But we did end a very strong year. And for those that are concerned about it, and there are people concerned about what's happening in the stock market, we do with the pension liabilities a smoothing. So if you have one good year, one bad year, it smooths out over a five-year period, or gets averaged over a five-year period for what our, our contributions are. Our contributions have already been set for next year, this coming fiscal year, which is gonna be put in the budget. It's already been presented to the Board of Finance for the amount. So what's happening in the stock market today will not affect us until over a year from now, just so people know. And then it'll be part of a smoothing. It won't be all in one shot, just in case the year is overall bad, which we don't know yet. So, make that clear. Thank you.
Capital Plannings.
No word.
Year off set at this time. I think bond construction oversight is probably the same.
Yeah, we just had a meeting recently, and Bob's still in the audience. We did take care of a couple of cleanup things, and we're also looking towards trying to start moving forward with the dehumidification process of the, of the pool, looking to start that process. We know that there's not enough money in the current bond to be able to do that project in full, so we're certainly hoping that the next bond project or some other funds will see that forward, because we need to address that situation.
We will be, just so you know, looking into a bond, probably developing it towards the end of this calendar year, and going out on that bond, which will include that dehumidification there. Very possibly a rework of the HVAC at the library, if possible. Some more road money, to name three top priorities there. But you all know that I try to hold bonds for every couple of years at minimum, because of the debt. Now, we did just refund some bonds, which means we refinanced essentially. They call it refunding. That, those were bonds that already existed, if you recall. That we didn't take out new money. So we take out money, and then it takes two, three years to use up that money. Some of my colleagues in other towns, a town to the north of us, took out eight million dollars all at once just for road work. I said, "Why on earth would you take that much money at once? Because you're never gonna spend it all that quickly," you know, but they did. So everybody has varying thoughts on how, how much to take and when. We generally do about five for roads, and that lasts us usually four, four to five years. So, we'll, we'll be working on that towards the end of the season. Personnel met. Selectmen Novicki, it was her first meeting, and Selectmen Okenquist, and Finance Director Sifarelli, and myself. We had two items came before us. One was extending the hours of the inland wetlands slash zoning intern, who will be becoming the official upon retirement of the current one, which is the first week of April, I believe. And the second was expansion. We heard from the building official, and the expansion of the assistant building officials' hours there. With that said, I teed it up, and I'm gonna let, I don't know, Margaret, Ralph, are you prepared to speak to that, or do you want me to keep going with it? Either way.
Well, I mean, I can say-
Jump right in.
What we, what we agreed on, as far, to the best of my understanding, that for the inland wetland zoning, that, that person was currently an intern, his, his position will be upgraded, was part-time, will be upgraded to full-time. And that person, I don't know whether I'm supposed to mention names or not.
You can't say it. It's okay.
Jack Demersion will take over once Paul retires the first week of April. And the intern position will be eliminated at that point.
Exactly. We did what we had talked about way back. Jack fell into us finally, after searching many, many, many resumes and people, and Paul is gone. I wanted to get it done last month, and we just couldn't quite get there to get it through there in this group. Paul's gonna be gone. Jack is in with both feet, but he's only working three days a week. And so we met, we discussed it. He's really on game, and he has some very good ideas for advancement and bringing it into the next century. We're excited about that, and we would like it obviously effective immediately for him to do that. So he'll be working five days a week, eight-thirty to four-thirty, as opposed to the three days a week that he had been working. He's taken on some other projects for me, like the clearing of the land at Wolf Park and things. He's a good kid, got a lot of energy, graduated University of New Hampshire, and I'm looking forward to working with him for more years to come. So that was the first one.
Jim, a quick question on that. I have no objection to what your intent is here. Just curious, does the union contract, is the union position require you to post that openly first, or can we just make that decision tonight?
It's, it's, it's an interesting position. It is in the, it's in the Supervisors Union. Well, we're not giving him that upper position tonight. All you're doing tonight is expanding him from three days to five days. We're not giving him the job tonight. He's, Paul's still here.
Right. I thought you said it was effective on Paul's retirement. I'm sorry. I missed-
On Paul's retirement, but that we can, that we can act on in April.
Okay.
Um, that's the intent. Margaret is a hundred percent right.
Okay.
There is no problem with it, because even though he's a member of the, the position, is a member of the Supervisors Union, it's a specialty position, and actually, if you read our charter, it, it's appointed by the zoning and First Selectmen. So we're okay with that part of it. But yeah, at this point, all you're approving is him moving up to full-time. Current wage, wage stays the same, because he will get, that contract reads that the new person coming in cannot be paid less than the person going out, and that's been in the contract since before you. So I think you probably recall that, you know, so that part of it, we don't have to touch the wage or anything on that. So, excellent, Margaret, very good. So make motion and all, is there a motion to be made to, as presented by Margaret?
Some of them.
Seconded, okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staying. Done. Okay. I think Ian was doing the sheet, John, for these, I think. I'm not quite sure. Right? Do we have sheets for these?
Yeah, they change.
Second one.
Yes, the second agenda item was about the Building Department requesting a change in the position of Ron Petrillo from part-time to full-time, and requesting full, full-time, meaning thirty-seven and a half hours a week. And that is based on the fact that they feel that they are understaffed, and their workload has grown tremendously, and they just do not have time, enough time or personnel to get it all done, especially the office work of filing all the permits and all that.
They have, how many million did he tell you that they've sold in permits since this fiscal year? It was like forty-eight million, or no, must've been more than that.
I don't, I don't write it down.
I mean, it was tremendous amount. But Rod has been working twenty-four hours, and solution came in. I offered thirty, thirty-two, and they really, he made a pitch for thirty-seven and a half, and the committee felt that that was fair after they listened to his presentation and all. No change in current rate, because this position would be affected by the non-union hourly salary employees when that comes around, come June.
What's the official title?
Assistant Building Official. So that was the request there. So is there any discussion? Otherwise, is there a motion on that one?
Second.
Okay, motion made, seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staying. That's it. Other than that, I have nothing more at this time. Oh, Sam's Club, no. Yes, Sam's Club closed a week or so ago, week and a half ago, three million nine hundred fifty thousand that sold for. Lowe's is all under contract, and all those purchasers were waiting for the period to pass for the zone change that they got from Commercial to Light Industrial, and they'll be closing on that. And we're moving forward with those, which is really great news. TD Bank is under contract for purchase, also not as a bank, because TD Bank had strong restrictions on it, but it will be reused as something else.
What's betting bond?
That's coming along. That hasn't, that's being redone, and there's a user for that building. I can't disclose it this time, but that's-
What about Bertucci's?
Bertucci, he was in last week, and he claims that he still has Mission Barbecue coming on one side, and he has another user for the other side. He was in, I asked him that. I, he's still six to it.
They're cleaning all the tiles out.
Yeah, they're cleaning it out. Yeah, they're, they're fixing it there, but-
And how about Ina Plaza? Is it TJ Maxx coming in?
That's one of their, under their umbrella, and we'll probably know when the plastic sign goes up on the front of the building.
I don't think so.
But that's all I have at the moment. I have, don't know if there's any other big sales right now. No, no. I think that's it, to the best of my knowledge at this time.
Very good.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Opposed, staying, unanimous, we're done at ten o'clock.